Like a target for.
Good morning, everybody. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting to order at nine thirty-three on August twenty-sixth, thirty-five. Also, we have the agenda in front of us. Um, I would like to note that administration has asked for an in-camera, I would call that agenda item ten point one. Uh, intergovernmental relations. That is one addition. There are any others. I'll call those now. I don't see any hands. I would ask for someone to make a motion to add the in-camera. Mayor Ireland, all in favor? And that is added. We now have an agenda in front of us. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Waxer, all in favor? Agenda is approved. Agenda item three, we have the, or sorry, agenda item four, creating the whole minutes from August twelfth. Any business arising from those minutes? I believe they've already been approved. I don't have to move that. Okay, moving on to agenda item five, delegations. This is the portion of the meeting where anybody in the gallery can speak to anything on the agenda. There are some folks in the gallery, but I'm not seeing anybody rushing. Oh, excellent. Mr. Butler?
Good morning. Thank you. Not rushing, but a couple of things to say. Uh, with respect to, I guess it's actually four items on a very packed agenda. So I want to speak briefly about off-site levies, the utilities master plan, that's seven-one, seven-two, and seven-three on your agenda. In twenty-seventeen, council, uh, administration completed an asset management study that was, uh, very forward-looking. And now we see another study. Not honestly, even with references to that initial work. I think the understanding at the time was that the asset management study would provide for funding in exactly the way that, uh, the utilities master plan has considered. So I think the first query I would have, or not, it's not even a question to be answered, but just a point made. Why? I'm wondering, was this initial additional work necessary when we already have a long-reaching utilities master plan? Looking at the off-site levy bylaw. Part of the rationale given is that provisions of the MGA are not aligned with the current bylaw, but I have to say, we can't see where that misalignment is. There have not been consequential changes to the MGA, um, other than the addition of, um, more allowable expense categories to be addressed by off-site levies. So I'm wondering, really, is there a misalignment there? And I'd like to address a fairly long list of guiding principles. And make the point that there seems to be an implication that some of those principles are, if not stated within the MGA or driven or, but or at least driven by the MGA. And I don't see where that's the case. And most importantly, there's a statement that, as a principle, that off-site levies should reflect the full capital cost of new infrastructure. And I have to say, I think that is, uh, where it's stated as a foundational principle, it's more of a philosophical point of view, and I think council should really consider the extent to which it feels that new projects should be funded entirely or largely through off-site levies. I think that point of view is really appropriate in large centers where you maybe have different districts and areas of the city. And benefit of various projects can be allocated to certain parts of the community. But I think our argument would be that the projects that are looked at within the utilities master plan benefit the community broadly, and as we are a very small community, I think you can say that about most infrastructure. The benefit is to the community at large. And I think it's reasonable the cost to be borne by the community at large. So where a rationale seems to be to avoid shifting the financial responsibility from developers onto Jasper taxpayers. I argue that the developers are Jasper taxpayers. There's, if there is a sense that these off-site levies will be paid by some constituency of developers that are separate and different from residents and taxpayers, that's not the case. Obviously, the off-site levies has charged cost of those will be passed on directly to the businesses and residents who pay them. So I find that rationale to be hard to understand. The growth pays for growth principle, again. As a rationale, I do understand that that is behind the thinking around off-site levies, but again, in a very small community, in a community, in a national park. And in a community where growth is strictly limited by factors outside of our control at all. Uh, the idea that growth is, um, that growth should pay for itself, I think, is less valid than it would be in other communities. And I'll just mention the unfounded assumptions that are built into the utilities master plan, and I recognize this was mentioned when, when by counselors when we used for about this a couple of weeks ago, and I'm happy to see that. It's been stated that the sixteen thousand-plus population projection is not a target, but it is a target with respect to consideration that infrastructure needs, and it doesn't sit well when we see population projections that really have no rationale around, in the context of what we all know are the limitations imposed on growth in Jasper, and none of us want to see a community with sixteen thousand plus residents, I don't think, and we don't see any economic support for that notion. Because, as we all know, we have a hard limit on commercial growth, and only that commercial growth can really support the population. So it's really important to make sure that we are thinking about residential development and commercial development hand-in-hand because they are closely linked, and commercial development drives the community, and that's what, in the end, supports and has to in our future, support our resident residential development. So there's a statement that many parcels are projected to densify, but there doesn't seem to have been an effort to draw any meaningful projections as to what, to what extent do we expect residential parcels to densify, rather an assumption that all residential or almost all residential parcels that could densify will densify to some maximum, and that is just not a credible assumption. And another metric that is, or measure that is used is commercial site coverage. Uh, it's acknowledged the commercial site coverage of sixty percent is allowable. And I think we're talking mostly about block S, but an assumption of forty percent is used. But site coverage is not a metric that plays into Jasper. Uh, we have no additional capacity to build out in block S, so we know what our site coverage is going to be. It is going to be what it was. So to, to form or to build decisions based on an assumption around any particular amount of site coverage doesn't really work. And finally, or second to last, the use of two entirely different metrics for building off-site levies in contrast with the previous bylaw or the current bylaw doesn't really make sense, and honestly, I don't see any rationale for moving on the residential side from per square foot to per living unit. No rationale that I've been able to find is given for that, and I can't understand why that change is being made. Under that, using that metric of per living unit, um, a very small studio suite intended to accommodate one or two people would be charged at the same rate as a large two-thousand-square-foot, five-bedroom mall. And I, it's hard to understand how that makes sense, particularly in a community where I think we are looking toward now hoping to build more accommodations for our seasonal and newly arrived service hospitality workforce. And probably a lot of that accommodation is going to look like very, uh, much smaller units, and so why are we without, I, I say meaning to, why are we potentially penalizing very much the sort of residential growth that we ought to achieve? So I think that going by per square foot, as the previous bylaw did, for all development is, you know, it's an apples-and-apples. It allows us to compare the way we are charging different categories of development in a way that is clear and transparent. So where one of the stated goals of this work is to increase transparency, to switch over, switch away from per square foot as a metric across development categories, in fact, is obfuscating. It doesn't increase clarity. And I'll mention the last point. This is a quote, "The rates established nearly a decade ago are outdated and do not reflect the current costs of providing growth-related infrastructure." Grant that is the case, but it's the case largely because we simply failed to index those rates over the past ten years, even though indexing was baked into the last bylaw, which this didn't do it. So I question, do we really need another bylaw, or do we really just need to modernize the rates? So I think it's important, open and transparent, when we're talking about decades-old rates, that they're decade, they're a decade old because we let them become a decade old. So those are my comments on the off-site levies and utilities master plan. I want to speak about property and business tax policy. That's item seven point five, but I don't know if you have questions for me on those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. I look to the table for any questions. Uh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and through you to Mr. Butler. Um, thank you for attending and for your your presentation. If you suggested that growth should be paid for by the community as a whole, um, rather than by the individual development, whether it's residential or non-residential. If I understood that correctly, how would you propose that that cost be allocated? Would it be to, for example, the the capital cost portion of utilities, so that CCC model, or would it be to taxation generally, or, or some combination?
So, um, to clarify, I don't mean to suggest that, um, I think it's fair that a proportion of incremental increase in the infrastructure costs could be allocated to, um, to increase in square floor space. So I'm not saying it's an all or nothing. To, to your point, uh, both of those things, I think, the capital portion of utilities that probably are aware that we have real concerns with that model, that we can address the model, and it should always have a cap. So yes to that. And also, um, where I'm arguing that, to a great extent, the growth, uh, the improvements or expansion of the infrastructure, I think, should be seen from a broad community benefit basis, then using an established taxation model, and we're going to talk about that today as well, is a fair way to look at it. Uh, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to get at, and I don't think I outlined that clearly, is I, it's I think concerning to see here in the aftermath of the fire, when a third of the community is forced by circumstance to redevelop and encouraged strongly to, to grow, speaking of residential in specifically, to then look to that exact constituency most affected by the fire to support. And it's a little hard for me to see through the numbers, but I think to support virtually all or most of this anticipated infrastructure upgrade. And it's hard to swallow the idea that the part of the community most affected will be the part of the community making payments. Unless I misunderstand. That's what I think. So that answers the question.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, Mr. Butler, your reference of, uh, twenty-seventeen, uh, management study that was up. And, um, we currently have before us the utility master plan. And I wonder if it's appropriate this time to look to administration to be able to help to clarify the difference between those two reports and what their purposes were, um, or this is something we should bring up, um, when we're actually in discussion under the utility master plan.
CEO Given.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Hall, for, Counselor Allen. So, um, I can speak a little bit to it, and I think it's, uh, appropriate for council to ask that of the technical experts who are probably, uh, are certainly more familiar with the, uh, the plans from twenty-seventeen than myself. Um, a couple of observations about the twenty-seventeen plan. Uh, number one, it was not specifically focused on the municipality's water and wastewater facilities exclusively. Um, where the utility master plan is, it specifically looks at only water, wastewater, and stormwater. The twenty-seventeen plan also considered sidewalks and roads, and so by virtue of the fact that it's considering all types of municipal infrastructure outside of buildings, um, it doesn't go into as great a level of detail on any one of those as a specific plan, like a utilities master plan, but on our water, wastewater, and stormwater. So the proposed, uh, master plan that is on the agenda today is much more detailed and is look at those specific assets rather than the somewhat broader look that considers the other classes of assets as well. The other item about the, uh, twenty-seventeen plan is it included a number of recommendations for capital spending and improvements that needed to be made. Um, and most of those went from twenty-seventeen to either twenty-twenty-one or twenty-twenty-two. So the timeline, you know, that that plan was intended to consider has expired. So the recommendations for what needed to be done when we pass that timeline by a few years. Um, and so that would be the other difference. So not only is this a more detailed look at a smaller set of assets, water, wastewater, and stormwater, it is also renewing a more current look at the assets, um, and renewing, um, that recommendation on what activities now need to be made for, uh, what improvements and activities need to be undertaken from twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, uh, up to twenty-thirty, something. Um, again, certainly ask the consultants to speak to that. I know those are some major differences between the twenty-seventeen plan, um, and the proposed utilities master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I, I appreciate that clarity because I, I don't recall the details of the twenty-seventeen plan, and I think that helps me and other counselors to understand the purposes of both of those reports. Um, I do have one question, um, for Mr. Butler, about, um, the comment about growth should pay for itself. We do have plans for densification and adding possibly two and three, four, or four-story apartment buildings. And that would be a significant addition in infrastructure. Um, the purpose, I think, of the off-site levy levies is to that new development on maybe lands that weren't part of the fire but are going to be redeveloped in the future. Would it not be reasonable that that development pay their portion of future infrastructure cost for water and wastewater?
Thanks for the question, and absolutely, it would, and I think you, um, hit the nail on the head. It would be reasonable for them to pay their portion. Absolutely. I think the question is, what is that portion? Because what we do, if we, let's, let's take the notion of one large apartment building, and that is going to require um, in-ground infrastructure and more wastewater treatment and all of that. So should the cost of those upgrades be entirely borne by the residents who will come to live in that? Because that is where the cost will, will flow to. Um, so where there is discussion around the importance of charging developers, um, that isn't how it works in the end, of course. Many would know that. So by in a sense, regionalizing the community, breaking the community into, okay, here, we're going to see a lot of growth, so let's make sure that we make those people pay. Are we in danger of actually creating different classes of residents? So the residents in the districts that were burned down, and therefore those districts are sort of available for densification in a way that is not the case in the rest of the community. To what extent is it really fair and equitable to, uh, tag those expenses to those particular residents, so we have residents who over the lifetime of these projects, and we rely on those projects, will potentially it is hard to see the extent to which that could be the case, but could potentially be paying, um, considerably more than what I would argue is their share. So should they pay their share? Well, absolutely. I don't know. The chamber will always argue that everyone should pay their share when it comes to taxation cost of infrastructure. But not more than sure. And that's the type of question I don't envy you in being faced with these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Waxer.
No, it's just. Well, uh, it, it, thank you, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to CEO Given. I wondered if you had the history of, of what has happened in the past. Let's say, for instance, when the area of Cabin Creek was developed, what was, were off-site levies then a portion to all the different, uh, lots that were developed then?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hall or Counselor Waxer, I, I can't speak to that. Um, that development was pre-municipality, um, and so I don't know that we would have that even as a part of the municipality's records. Um, and so, no, I, I can't speak to that.
Go ahead, Ms. Butler.
I happen to know that the first offset levy bylaw that Jasper had was two thousand and eight, so no would be the answer to that. We didn't even have off-site levies before two thousand and eight.
Yeah, I think, um, that, we're done with that, and you also wanted to speak to that item, um, seven, uh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and, and not for Mr. Butler, but just for the record, from my perspective, um, because we've spoken about, uh, agenda item seven point one. Um, and we have for discussion the utility master plan. But for the record, even though it's noted on the agenda, we don't actually have before us the final report. Um, and it's, there is a link, but due to the size of the report, as I understand it, it's too large, should be posted on our municipal website, and so so far as I'm aware, at least, I, I know that, speaking for myself, I have not been able to access the final report, and I don't think other counselors have, and so whether or not it references the twenty-seventeen asset management study, I don't know because I, for one, have not yet had the advantage of actually reading, um, the report, either the final report or, or any preliminary report. So just for the record, it's, it's before us. Um, but we don't have access to the actual report.
Thank you, Pat. We'll go ahead, Ms. Butler.
Yeah, thanks, and I appreciate that, of course. You take the opportunity, when you see it on the agenda, to address something and, and fully recognize that these decisions have not yet been made, and even all of the, um, important information is not necessary in front of you. I think overall, our concern with the off-site levies is there seems to be a sense that, so if growth should pay for growth, to a point, that's fair. We seem to be, based on tenuous assumptions, assuming a great deal of future growth and base, and sizing our utilities accordingly, when I think it's fair to ask ourselves, to what extent are we actually expecting that degree of growth? And are we potentially overbuilding and therefore overcharging our residents? I would like to speak briefly about item seven point five, property and business tax policy. And let me say, I'm very pleased to see the item on your agenda. We're very pleased to see, to see that there's going to be an upcoming conversation about this, so congratulations on bringing it forward. I know that's because of previous motions in council. In our view, there's no, no more important issue facing the community, and we support the notion of going the route of developing a policy basis for setting mill rates in future. I, uh, do think that is the right way to go. The conversation, and it links to the one we just had, the conversation about who pays for what in Jasper is a conversation that really has not been held in a robust and broad and inclusive way for a really long time ever, and I think it's critically important right now, as we face huge change in our community, that these questions be addressed. A few key points I just want to sort of put on the table now, recognizing that these conversations will all be in the future and to the great extent, um, by the next iteration of council. Where the brief discussion in the RFD is focused on the mill rate ratio itself, I want to make the point that the mill rate ratio is not, and should not really be the focus of future conversations. Mill rate ratio is a tool to achieve outcomes. The mill rate ratio that is determined every year should be the outcome of the conversation and not really the topic of the conversation. Here are a few points that I think are really important to consider and should be part of your future conversations. The relative size of the residential and the non-residential tax assessment. Prior to the fire, the residential tax assessment was about one point five times the non-residential tax assessment. And I think that is really important to understand when discussing what sort of mill rate ratio should be derived out of. Second point, the fiscal impact of increasing residential development within the context of very little non-residential development. We all know that we reached the cap or we will see the cap reached, uh, of commercial floor space following, uh, the. So, of course, we want to increase residential development, but residential development in Jasper, due to longstanding mill rate ratios, are actually um, a net consumer of taxation and not a producer of taxation. And so I think it's really important that we think about what does the fiscal framework, how are we raising money within the community as we continue, as we should, to advance development of residence, residential development in Jasper. So in no way am I arguing, we should not be going down the road of increasing densification, and it's good to see the work that is being done there, but we should have a clear understanding of the fiscal implications. We should be talking about the fiscal impact of past and continuing equity-restricted residential development. I anticipate that there will be more equity-restricted residential development. I think that's a good thing. I think it's important that we see that kind of development in Jasper. But we should understand what the implications are from a fiscal standpoint. Again, not a conversation that I think is really been alive in the community over the years, and I think it's critically important that that be factored into future conversation. I think it's valid to look at what I know is a very wide variation in per-dwelling unit taxation rates. That taxation that one sort of home or living unit in Jasper pays can be very widely disparate from what others pay. And it's maybe not equitable. And it's maybe not equitable. And I do understand that equality is not the same as equity. But I think it's an important part of the conversation and should be. I think the implications, the next point, implications of carve outs or exemptions. This relates to the first, the previous point. Carve outs and exemptions within the assessment framework is something that is really important to look up, look at. Sometimes they're not hugely financially consequential, but they are nonetheless consequential when you're looking at a system where it's very important that all constituents see it to the extent that it's possible as a fair and equitable system. The relative impact or demand of resident and visitor facing services is a really important part of the conversation. And council has done work on this previously and has had some expertise brought to this conversation at a fairly high level, I would say. But we know that our service and infrastructure network is sized larger than it might be for another community with 5,000 year round residents. I think that's an important part of the conversation that should be looked at. And again, you can bring light to your conversation about what sort of mill rate ratio you might want to end up at by using that. And finally, the manner in which commercial use is defined. So we say commercial, in the assessment world, it's non residential. Are we sure what we mean, what qualifies and what defines commercial use? The MGA requires by law that all commercially used properties, so all non residential property, has to be assessed on the income basis. And that is a really important point. And where it is not happening, it is not happening in some parts, some constituencies in Jasper. It introduces potentially inequity in the system. So I will emphasize again, MGA requires that commercial tax assessments be based based on the income approach. Yet we don't do that in all cases. And then finally, when looking at policy, while you don't want to be immediate circumstance, it's important to understand, I think, that there is a great deal of uncertainty around the income potential of non residential or commercial properties flopping in the fire there. We just don't know what the income potential of those properties is going to be in the future. I grant that in a perfect world, the assessment process accounts for that. But for a couple of reasons, we should be alive to those concerns. The assessment process is always behind a necessity. So I think it is really important to be aware of those concerns. The commercial, the rebuild of commercial properties, we expect is going to be slow and underfunded. And that will have implications. And are we confident that those implications will be addressed entirely through future assessments? Should be part of the conversation. So those are a few considerations that I'd like to sort of put on the table for future conversations. Again, we're very happy to see those conversations are going to happen. We ask and we recommend two things. Consult early and robustly with constituents and stakeholder groups. Please don't wait until the draft policy is in place to do this. Secondly, consult early and robustly with subject matter experts. There's lots of expertise out there about these questions, these questions. While our context is somewhat unique, these are not unique questions. All municipalities deal with them. There is lots of expertise out there. And we urge you to make use of that expertise. As always, it's one of the stakeholder groups in Jasper. Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce is committed to being part of the conversation, contributing productively to future positive decision making. No areas more than this one. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Butler, for coming today. I'd love to counsel for any comments or questions around Mr. Butler's delegation around seven point five. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to agenda item six, correspondence. I don't believe we had any correspondence or last minute. And no, we had a couple of late joiners in the gallery. I'm wondering if there are any more delegations or anything on the agenda. Okay, I see heads shaking. All right, moving on to agenda item seven, new business. Seven point one, the utilities master plan report. I will pass this over to CEO Given.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. I'll start just to frame this out a little bit and then pass it on to the rest of the team and the consultants that will guide council through the RFD and the report. First, apologies to council. The document sizes, it was noted, made it difficult to share. I know Director Donaldson's found another method and has supplied that to council by email. I'll also, you know, note that the report itself is 150 pages and it's essentially a technical document. So it is not expected that council would be adjusting parts of that technical document or recommendations. But it is completely fair and a reasonable expectation that council would see it. The RFD does cover the content and sort of the essential executive summary, I guess, if you will, of the master plan. But administration fully intends to make the document public. And when we published the agenda on Friday, we believe that the link provided would have done that. Obviously, it didn't, and so we will correct that. So I just wanted to say that that was a bit of a technical challenge. But without further ado, I think I'll pass over to director, to manager, Michelle, who is going to speak to it. And I believe we also have our consultants from ISL or online to assist. And so, Vidal, I'll pass it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Given. I just want to address Mr. Butler's previous question about differences between the 2017 asset management study and our new utility master plan. Further discussion, Mr. Given, you're right, is an additional hyper focus on an area of high costs of the municipality. But also, it's a different type of study. The asset management study was the costing review. So we can base our reserve funding on future replacement needs. So asset management was more in line with a replacement of in kind, size for size, like for like. Utility master plan takes more of a modeling and an engineering review of assets to determine that, yes, we still have capacity within our system. And if we do need to upgrade, what upgrades do we need? What upgrades do we need to satisfy regulatory updates? So there are two studies that kind of work in conjunction, but we did them separately in this case. So too bad you hadn't seen, had a chance to read the 175 page document. But we'll try to summarize it as best we can. As you can see in the request for decision, it's been a long process over a few years due to multiple factors. But this is going to give us a guiding document from now to give a 25 year capital planning structure and make sure that the dollars we do invest for infrastructure are going to serve future growth and future population and not just be a like for like replacement with a no thought of efficiencies that can be integrated. So if no further ado, I'm going to let the people who created the study can talk about the technical overview, and then we'll be available for questions after. I'll pass you on to Jeffrey or Joel.
Thank you, Vidal. I'm going to share a presentation here. All right, can everybody see the presentation?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you. Yeah, so my name is Joel Greco from ISL Engineering. Myself, along with colleagues, have helped prepare the Jasper Utility Master Plan, sometimes abbreviated to the as UMP. This presentation will summarize some of the key findings of the plan, as well as the process we went to, went through to prepare it. So the purpose of this plan, it consolidates prior system specific studies of the water and sanitary system and also integrates stormwater modeling and a look at the stormwater system for the first time. The system or the plan also carried out condition assessments for key water and wastewater facilities such as pump stations, wells, the water treatment system, and brings it all together into that capital plan that Vidal mentioned. The study, a bit of a timeline on the study, it was initiated in late 2023 and was underway during the wildfire in 2024. It was on hold for a time during the immediate recovery and then picked back up for completion in 2025 with a small additional scenario for the redevelopment population that's been discussed. So I'll get into the scenarios later, but it kind of accounts for assessing the existing system conditions and future system conditions of the utility systems and identifies efficiencies, recommends upgrades and prioritizes projects for each of the systems. So the scope of the study, sorry, the study area and growth context. It's the existing system study is based on 5,000, approximately 5,000 residents in Jasper. And it studies the water distribution system, which is the buried pipes that carry water to homes and businesses, the water supply system in Jasper, that's three wells, a reservoir and a water treatment plant, the wastewater collection system, again, the buried pipes that carry wastewater away from homes and businesses, wastewater pumping facilities, that's the lift stations that pump wastewater, and the stormwater system, again, buried pipes that can convey runoff. So next slide. The population horizons we considered in the utility master plan, the existing system or base population was 4,738 people based on the 2021 census. We looked at a 25 year horizon at 10,000 people. It's important to note that this horizon was in alignment with previous water and sanitary studies, kind of based on a 2% growth rate consistent with the federal census. And then after the wildfire, an additional scenario for the post wildfire redevelopment was added, and this envisions two thirds of new development in the damaged areas and one third in the remainder of the town, representing a conservative approach to the level of redevelopment that could occur. This scenario was defined by the municipality and is an undefined length of time, but likely in the 50 to 75 year range. It's quite a conservative future scenario. So in the water system, water is supplied to Jasper by three wells, which have sufficient capacity to meet Jasper's needs in the near and medium term. This was assessed through a source well assessment carried out during the UMP with generally favorable results. The supply wells do have some small upgrades, such as keeping a spare pump on hand and developing another source well in the higher growth rate scenarios. The water treatment system and reservoir have some upgrades required, in particular, adding a baffled chlorine tank and chlorine contact chamber to reduce, to improve disinfection and to meet regulatory requirements. This is required in the 25 year and post wildfire scenarios. In the 20, in the future scenarios as well, a modest increase to the reservoir size would be required. In the distribution system, so the buried water pipes, improvements to connectivity are proposed to improve fire flow to meet meet required fire flows across Jasper. Connectivity of some, some of the water systems to improve looping can also improve those fire flows. There's two to three areas where pipe sizes are proposed to be increased. And there is a proposed pressure zone system that would reduce high pressures in the low lying areas of Jasper, which would improve leakage and add to pipe longevity. Sorry. Yeah, so the top priorities are a 300 millimeter water main that goes from the the supply main, bringing the reservoir into the town, into downtown Jasper for improved fire flows. Pipe size increases along Stan Rate Drive and Pyramid Lake Road, the pressures on reconfiguration and the reservoir and water treatment plant upgrades that I mentioned. The estimated costs of some of these are below, with the caveat that the water treatment plant at reservoir cost is for kind of the full population. There's some lower costs at the 25 year horizon. The wastewater system was assessed as well. In general, it has quite a bit of redundancy in spare capacity with two very minor capacity constraints at two locations. The three lift stations were also assessed for their condition and have kind of modest, modest increase, modest upgrades to improve their operation. But in the post wildfire densification scenario, it triggers upgrades at the Stone Mountain Lift Station, which is kind of situated in the catchment of the Cabin Creek area, just based on the density in that location. So yeah, again, quite, quite a low amount of proposed upgrades compared to the water system and really located in two to three locations. Stormwater system was modeled and assessed. It was found to be designed for kind of two to five year return period storms. The stormwater system is known to generally function well with some minor flooding observed in Patricia Street that was also observed through the modeling. The upgrades proposed in the stormwater system are to increase the capacity of the system to handle a five year return period, which is more in line with regulations and typical municipal standards and are kind of placed at a lower priority than water and wastewater to be carried out along with road upgrades and other utility upgrades. The top priorities are along Patricia Street, Bonham Street, Conningot Drive, et cetera. The projects were brought together in a capital plan and prioritized based on risk and benefit, both for the facilities and the linear projects. The high priority focuses on improving water pressure and fire flow and kind of the critical operational pieces that need to be addressed in the next five years. The medium priority focuses mainly on the pressure management and further upgrades, pressures on management and further upgrades the system. And the low priority are low priority categories, long term improvements, particularly in the stormwater system. Yeah, so in conclusion, the UMP provides a phase plan for resilient, sustainable utilities and a risk based prioritization system that will establish these priorities and aid in capital planning. I'd like to just kind of close on the idea that the performance of Jasper's current system is quite high, and we do have a limited amount of upgrades proposed. So the core systems do function well on our size appropriately. And the upgrades are really proposed to make improvements that increase longevity and resilience into the future. The outcomes of the UMP are used in the offset levy by law, as well as the basis for further planning, such as funding applications, preliminary or detailed design, and eventually construction. Yeah, with that, I'd welcome any questions and thank you for listening to my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greco, for the presentation. And I may look to council for questions. We're having some light technical issues here now. Councilor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I did want to comment on.
I did want to comment on the 25 year population number. In the aftermath of the wildfire, while we did have a population of under 5,000 in our individuals who identified to various recovery centers. It appeared that between our permanent population and also our pardon me, our population of seasonal workers that we were someplace in between eight and nine thousand workers, 8,000 workers who identified with Jasper and having to have been relocated and assisted through the Red Cross. So when I see the number of 10,662 over another 25 year cycle, I think that's a reasonable number for us to be planning towards a wastewater treatment plant and water treatment plant for that level of population. So I'm glad to see that was highlighted in the report. And I just wanted to mention out and draw that correlation between the 2021 census, the 2024 evacuation numbers and this 25 year forecast of where our population might be.
Thank you very much, Councilor Melnick, and I do agree with you for the first time, we actually were able to have a fairly accurate number of what our population is in the summertime. Because anybody that called Jasper home on July 24th last year, I just most, I would say most whatever registered with Red Cross and it was just under 9,000. So to see 10,000 in 25 years, we're, we're almost there in certain months of the year. So I appreciate that comment. I will let to that table for any more questions or comments. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Holland, on that same issue then of, of population. You have predicated some of the future thinking on an increase of population from about 5,000 to about 10,000. But if you were starting from a base of 8,000 instead of 5,000, does that change the calculation? If we're already serving a population bigger than we expected, then are the upgrades of the same kind of scale as has been predicated in the, in the report? In other words, how important is that base figure to the calculations and what if it is unrealistically low and that we have been serving a larger population all along and simply didn't know?
Without getting into too many technical details, we do consider we do consider the water usage and wastewater generation in Jasper during the building of these models. So we calibrated the water model based on based on data from the water production and consumption values and likewise in wastewater. We, the wastewater model was previously calibrated when it was created. So the population numbers are important in the distribution of how the demands and wastewater loading is distributed through Jasper. But we do calibrate the models to data to ground truth, what, what the models, what the models are saying. So in that existing system scenario with the upgrades we're proposing, they are calibrated models. So they have been kind of verified with some of, some of this data coming from the municipality.
Thank you for that. And I lack any sort of technical knowledge on this. But it, it just occurs to me, and perhaps you can, you can correct me, that if we compare water usage by gross volume against population, that tells us what increase use we would get from an increased population. But if we base it on a population of 5,000, we are more highly intense users than if we base it on a population of 8,000. And so again, it just seems to me as, as a practical matter that the population matters in calculations because 5,000 people using whatever the gross volume is suggests we are much higher users than if that population basis is 8,000. So again, I, I just don't follow the math to get to the necessary upgrades without having a solid grounding in the actual population.
The CEO given.
Your worship and this is sort of a, the technical team might have a comment on this. But I think an observation that will probably ring true to council is that the municipalities' regular census population mischaracterizes and always has mischaracterized the number of people using municipal systems. Like that's an inherent challenge with Jasper. I'm going to go a little bit out of waiting to see if the ISL guys shake their heads, but you know, I think that really what they looked at was the, the volumes of consumption and waste that are generated currently, you know, like what they can measure against the current population and extrapolated that out. Right? And so, so I think, Mayor Ireland, you're likely right. The numbers would probably suggest that the volumes that are processed by our system are much higher than some other community of 5,000 population. And that's just, I mean, I think we all recognize there's a reason for that because there's a whole bunch of people who aren't regularly resident who contribute to and draw from that, you know, contribute to the waste and draw from the water and insist on me to supply that. I think what the plan does is say, okay, based on what these consumption and usage patterns are in Jasper today, what would that be likely to look like in the future? And so, so you know, we are high consumers. If you look at us on a per census counted resident basis, and we will continue to be high users per census resident basis in the future, because we're always going to have all these other people using the system that are non-residents, but still need water and still produce wastewater. Is that it? So I'm going to look again to the, to the ISL folks and, and ask how far off I might have been in that answer. And please, please, for council's benefit, do correct anything that I misstated or where I was wrong. Don't, don't be afraid to call me out. I'll give you that.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. Yeah, you're, you're generally correct. Yeah, we use the, the data we had available, both with water usage and consumption data, the calibrated stormwater model. And distributed that across the town using kind of conventional techniques that we do with hydraulic models and then projected as, as we do in other municipalities. So yeah, I think you're, I think you're correct there.
Mayor Ireland.
If I might continue then, and I appreciate CEO Given's comments. And everything that happens here is also influenced, of course, by the visitor population. And so has any calculation been done about potential growth in the visitor population making increased demands on the water and sewer system in particular?
In particular to the visitor population, projecting that was not a part of this study or outlined in it. I think it could be done using the models that, that Jasper now has, but not specifically addressed in the UMP.
Councilor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. During the presentation, you, there was references to the required infrastructure work. That would be under near-term projects, midterm projects and longer term. Totalling about $42 million in $2024. And I take it looking at the, the way the projects were laid out in the presentation to us and the request for decision is that these are laid out over time strategically to be able to continue to improve the wastewater treatment plant as certain aspects are wearing out and, and need to be replaced. And I take it this would be typical in any similar sized water treatment plant or any typical water treatment plant. These are just natural capital projects that need to be done to maintain a plant for the volume that we're anticipating. And again, we talked about population and our visitor component of that throughout the year. Is there anything in, say, the midterm at $18 million? There would be something out of the ordinary.
Just a point of clarification, the UMP does not address the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant, just the wastewater collection system and the pump stations in that midterm project range. I don't have the full list in front of me, but nothing that I would consider extreme or extremely deficient. The addition of the pressure zones is kind of a higher level planning decision to reduce water pressures, which would help with leakage and aging pipes. And, and that kind of lives in that midterm project timeframe. Some of the lower priority deficiency corrections with lift stations live in there and some of the lower priority co, sanitary collection system upgrades, there's two minor, minor upgrades in there as well.
You, so in, in basically in essence, this is the this is the forecast of the dollars that we need to maintain basically our existing system as we move forward in the next 25 years, which was the purpose of the master plan.
Yes, that's correct.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. All I, I also wanted to comment about the, the projected future costs as Councilor Melnick indicated about $42 million over a 25 year period from my review of the graph. More heavily weighted toward 10 years and beyond, less so in the, in the first five years and then a little more in five to 10 year period. Can you tell us in quantitative terms or relative terms, how much of that might be focused on water, how much on wastewater and how much on stormwater?
Again, I don't have the exact breakdown in front of me, however, water makes up the larger, the largest category broadly. Between the distribution upgrades, the chlorine baffling tank and a potential reservoir expansion for a future population. Stormwater would make up the second largest. Again, focusing on those pipe upgrades designed to increase the capacity of the system to meet a five year level of service. And then the wastewater system. Remembering this excludes the wastewater treatment plant is quite a bit smaller, quite a bit, quite a few less recommended upgrades. Just minor upgrades at the lift stations and kind of minor collection system upgrades. So yeah, quantitatively, I can't do the math in my head, but it's, yeah, water in water is the largest, followed by stormwater, followed by wastewater.
Thank you for that. And I will, I will be cautious and just defer if you want, because I appreciate your, your to give technical advice, not necessarily policy advice. But getting ahead of that on our agenda, it is proposed that this utilities master plan be incorporated by reference into an off-site levy by law. And without having actually read the plan, I wonder whether there is anything in it or whether you can advise us whether either council or a future council or administration can use the plan to help differentiate between those capital items which would be for broad community benefit and those which might be more personal to a, a developed property. And I ask that because the intent is to incorporate, as I say, this into an off-site levy by law. And so I'm, I'm wondering to what extent it could help us make those particular decisions in the future. And just as an example, I would think that treating stormwater is pretty much a community benefit that has little to do with any private development. Increased fire hydrants, maybe that's a community benefit if that's part of it. But is there anything in this report that will assist in the future or determination to be made about whether or not a capital item should qualify as something to be the cost of which should be dispersed generally throughout the community or targeted to a particular development?
Yes, so within the report for that post wildfire redevelopment scenario, we have kept the proposed projects for that scenario separate and those projects are what are included in the off-site levy report. So those projects are driven by development, i.e. the difference between the existing system and that population protection scenario. And those projects are listed separately, kind of pulled out from the, the wider capital plan and proposed to be levied accordingly. So they are separate and I think I would note that a majority of the projects in the UMP are for system resilience and system longevity, like to keep the system providing a good level of service and they're not necessarily driven by developments. Take for example, the, the pressure zone reconfiguration. That's not a project that's included in the off-site levy project or report and it's a project that benefits Jasper widely. It's so it's included in the utility master plan due to technical need and, and future system planning. It's not in that separate list of projects for the levy. That's kind of a standalone list summarized in the document. There's six projects on that list.
Thank you.
Mayor Ireland, I have a question about funding. I know that administration will seek out grants and alternative sources of funding for this. I also know that municipal infrastructure is mostly funded by the province through the LGF, I think it's called. I, I don't think it's enough to fund what's happening across the province. I'm wondering if this is sort of a common theme in other municipalities that infrastructure is starting to, I, I think ours is 50, 60, maybe can be a bit older. I just wonder if that's a common thing that potentially Mr. Rico, your group might see in other municipalities as well?
Yeah, we certainly see as we get to the age design life of infrastructure, infrastructure designed and installed in the 1960s does require renewal. We do often see either deficient, hydraulically deficient infrastructure or infrastructure division driven by condition. Proposed for upgrades in this plan, in plans similar to this in other municipalities. proposed for upgrades in this plan, in plans similar to this in other municipalities. I won't speak too much to the method of funding, as that's not my expertise, but I'd say that that these type of upgrades are quite consistent compared to other municipalities. If not, my personal impression Jasper's infrastructure is in kind of good to better condition than other than other municipalities I've seen. Jeff might be able to speak more widely to other utility master plans, but yeah.
Yeah, it's globally speaking, we don't see near as many problems in the Jasper system as we do in plenty of other places, I'd say, in terms of lack of fire flow, in terms of sewage backup and that sort of thing. So it's, like we said, it's in reasonable shape, basically. You know, a few bigger ticket items as things grow, which is not an unusual thing to find, basically. And certainly, we can talk more about this when we talk about the offset lever report why this is useful to have, basically, but a lot of these get into your ability to, you know, have the U M P to pursue grants and things like that in the future kind of thing. And so that all kind of fits together with how your levy is structured. You know, where gets into fundability, certainly. So we can talk about that when we get to the offsite levy, but that part, if you have that part dialed in properly, the chance of getting grants from the province is greatly increased. So I can I can talk about that later.
Thank you for that. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you for those comments. And I think basically what you're saying in summary, if you got a system that's working well, it's up to you to maintain it and keep improving on it so that you don't run into future problems. So, you know, I appreciate this report and appreciate the comments about, you know, people are going to wonder, why are we spending money on infrastructure? We spend money on infrastructure to prevent long term further costs. If you do your, if you do your ongoing maintenance on a plan basis, we as a community should benefit in over the long term, over the next twenty five years. And I think your comments basically have said that.
I look to the table for any more comments or questions. C A O given.
Appreciating there may still be questions, just in terms of process. Administration is here with a recommendation that Council adopted the utility master plan as presented. I want to be clear about that recommendation. Number one, it does not presume that Council is approving any of the projects in the utility master plan. Also, the utility master plan is a document that provides advice to administration, which we can incorporate in future budget presentations, our operational and capital planning, all of which are subject to approval by Council. So certainly, committee here today, you're not making any kind of final decision. We're not asking you to do that. And even at Council, adoption of the plan does not presume approval of the projects. So that's a really important point that I want to make sure Council and the community were aware of. And then finally, just going back to that technical matter about the Council having the ability to flip through the entire hundred and fifty, hundred and seventy page technical document, absolutely should be able to do that. And we would ensure that, while I know that Director Donaldson's already circulated that to Council, we would make sure that that plan is posted to the municipality's website in draft format in an area where it can be downloaded by the public. We can do that later today in advance of the publishing for the council agenda. We can ensure that it's more accessible on the council agenda for next week. So if committee chooses to refer this to Council, first, let us ask me to approve any of the projects in there. That will be subject to future decision making through the regular budget and capital plan process. And we'll ensure that the entire document is available for Council and for the general public before it comes to the council meeting next week. And as soon as in advance of that as possible, we won't leave it until Friday afternoon when our agenda is regularly published. This is an important document to aid administration in our planning. Does have policy implications about how we choose to fund these things, but those decisions we're not asking you to make today.
Thank you, C A O given. If there are no other questions or comments or conversation, I'm may look Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Through you to C A O given. My concern currently is a recommendation by committee to council to adopt a document we haven't actually seen. And I appreciate that it is simply a recommendation. But if that was changed to say that committee recommend council receive the utility master plan and add to that. Well, I guess once it gets on the the agenda, council can do what it wants anyway, including adopt it. But from administration's perspective, how significant would it be if we changed the word adopt to see?
That was Mayor Hall. So my suggestion. My suggestion would be that a committee today, you could refer the utility master plan to council for consideration. And so it's not coming with a full recommendation that the from the committee today, the council adopted. The committee is directly referring the plan and advising council that they should consider it. That would keep it moving forward. And, you know, being very frank, where we are towards the end of the term, you know, and in terms of developing twenty twenty six and beyond capital budgets, which administration is in the midst of right now, you know, keeping things moving forward is important. That might be better. We would. I think it's good practice for council to view these types of documents, even though they're technically even though they're really intended to be used by administration. It's good for council to acknowledge them and adopt, endorse, you know, whatever council might choose to do at a regular council meeting. We've, over the last term, we've really started that practice so that reports like this have sandman. And so for today, I think it would be committee recommend council consider utilities master plan as presented. And then at the council table, ideally, council would be in a position to adopt. But again, that would be a decision the council would make next week.
Thank you very much, C A O given. And to send any look to the table for motion. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Working from C A O's given suggested wording, I I am prepared to make a motion, but it is slightly different. My motion would be that committee refer consideration of the utility master plan as presented to council. And council at that point, sorry, and that is my motion, and to speak to the motion. The council will, when it considers the matter of actually having an opportunity to read it, I agree with C A O given that as a counselor, I at least feel a responsibility to read documents that are on the agenda before we do anything with them, particularly adopt them. I don't know what's in there. I can appreciate that it is mostly technical and beyond my scope and perhaps beyond the scope of council, but I'd want to look at the document and particularly at underlying assumptions. So we've spoken about some assumptions today, but I'm going to assume that when I get a chance to read this weekly document, there might be a page that indicates what other assumptions might be, and those are the sorts of things that I think counselors have an obligation to read and consider before making any recommendations. So I do appreciate some need to move this along. I appreciate that the time that this council has to deal with this is limited and it might wind up being addressed by a new council in any event, but to keep it moving without committing counsel, I make the motion that I have.
Thank you for your motion. There is a motion on the floor. Is there any debate on the motion? I will call the question. All in favor? And that motion is carried. At this time in the call, it will be quick brief rest, recess, brief recess. I apologize to Mr. Showmeister and Mr. Greco. I think you're probably still up for the next agenda item as well. So we will we'll call a brief recess for ten minutes and come back at eleven oh five. Welcome back. At this time, we are going to move on to business agenda items seven point two Jasper offsite levy update. And I believe I'm passing it to Mr. Showmeister and Mr. Greco again. We'll start with Mr. Pollock.
Okay, good morning, committee. Yes, thank you very much. Today, we're going to be presenting the Jasper offsite levies update for two thousand twenty five. This was prepared by I S L engineering, who are here with us today. The purpose of this presentation is to request that committee recommend council adopt the update as presented to ensure the findings are understood and to provide direction on using it as a foundation for the offset levy by law. As you know, the current offsite levies by law, last updated in two thousand fifteen. Those rates are now outdated and no longer reflect the true cost of growth related infrastructure in Jasper. This means that every day that a new bylaw is not put in place, the municipality of Jasper is essentially undercharging for net new development. The result is that there would be potentially a financial burden shifted away from the actual developers and onto the general tax base. Updating these rates relines with the principle that net new growth should in fact pay for net new growth. So what I'll do now is I'd actually like to address a comment that was made during the delegations. And what I would like to do is, if we could go to page forty three of Agenda Package, there is actually a little bit of a breakdown here as far as the difference between what can be levied and what can't be. So under the Municipal Government Act, what can be levied and what can't be leveled? Levable rates for an offsite levy by law have to be directly attributed to net new growth. So essentially, some of the things quoted here in the U M P, I'll give you an example under the table that says project costs. Everyone can see that. The estimated construction cost for this, for the waste, or sorry, the reservoir upgrades here, you can see a total of just a little bit over eleven million dollars. You'll actually see levable project cost here as well as municipal contribution, sorry, municipal contribution. The reason for that is because, again, under the M G A or offsite levies, the levy has to be attributed to net new growth. So new infrastructure needed for net new growth. So just going back to the the actual thing put in front of you, or the update written in front of you, this update builds directly on the utility master plan, which of course was just presented to you. The U M P identified the major water and wastewater system upgrades needed for both today's demands and for long term growth. I S L's analysis identified seven key capital projects, three water projects and four wastewater projects that are directly attributed to growth. These includes upgrades for our wells, treatment plants, improvements to the water distribution system and significant sanitary upgrades such as the cabin creek system and a new trunk sewer and a wastewater treatment plant upgrade. The utility master plan identifies a twenty five year capital program of approximately forty two million dollars in two thousand twenty four construction costs to maintain, upgrade and expand Jasper's water, wastewater and stormwater systems. So not all of these costs are attributable to growth. After applying levy allocations based on which projects directly support new development, that growth share is actually approximately closer to about seventeen million dollars. So again, that's that's the key point there is it's the growth related costs for offsite levels. It is growth related shares that form the basis of calculating offset levy rates. Using this figure, I S L recommends supportable rates of four thousand two hundred and eighty six dollars and thirty six cents per net new residential units and five dollars and fifty three cents per square foot of non residential belt. Note that these are recommendations. Council does still retain the discretion to either set lower rates, phase in rates, or just adjust the rates entirely. I S L has also recommended annual inflationary updates, so that would be C P I, and a full review of levy rates for the bylaw every three to five years. It is also worth clarifying that I S L's analysis uses a long term reference population of around sixteen thousand people, which reflects infrastructure needs on about a fifty to a seventy year horizon. So we want to make this very clear. This is not a municipal target when we're talking about population. This is rather is more of a planning reference point to test system capacity and ensure that our infrastructure investments will serve the community over many decades. So again, when we talk about the population threshold, which was addressed at the previous committee meeting, council will have the opportunity to set a more formal population target through the development of Jasper's next town plan. And again, we're anticipating some of the work for the new town plan to begin in January of two thousand twenty six. So with that, administration recommends that committee advise council to adopt the offsite levies update as presented. This will allow us to move forward with a more modernized offsite levy by law that better reflects today's realities, ensures growth, pays for growth, and protects the general tax base from some subsidizing infrastructure that is directly tied to net new development. So at this point, I would like to invite I S L to provide a little bit more of a detailed presentation on their methodology, assumptions and the proposed levy rates.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pollock. And I look to the screen. It looks like Mr. Showmeister's mic is off.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Did that, did that come up?
Yes, it did.
Okay, perfect. So do a bit of a presentation here and we'll go from there. Won't be too long. So basically, the process we followed, or we'll talk about just the overview of the offset levy, what our methodology was, assumptions, the projects that are in here, and then the summary, basically. So what are offsite levies? Basically, it's a mechanism for you to recover capital costs of infrastructure related to growth, which can be new growth, infill redevelopment, et cetera. They're considered to be a fair and equitable way to allocate capital costs of infrastructure projects to growth areas benefiting from each project. And again, there are, we do have to sort of strike a balance of what benefits existing versus what benefits growth, basically. You know, we can't charge growth for things that benefit existing, or a levy can be challenged, and then it would be, it would go down, for example. For just as an example, and by the same token, part of the here is striking the balance between making growth pay for itself versus putting it on the existing taxpayer. And part of the point of the levy is you're looking at these, what could happen, basically. And you would then, you know, collect based on that horizon sort of thing. We do have, you know, there's been some separate discussions with sort of trigger populations for certain upgrades that are in the levy report. So if you started approaching those populations, when you'd get into your pre design for the upgrade, you'd have the ability to revisit the design horizon for that upgrade at that time. So say, for example, you're growing slower or faster, basically, and then you could adjust. And that's why we talk about adjusting the levies periodically. Okay? The big thing to remember with these things is you, if you don't collect it, you're never going to get it, basically. If you do collect it, and let's say you were collecting based on an upgrade to go to, say, sixteen thousand people, and you didn't get to sixteen, if you over collect, you can refund. Just that's something just to remember. So again, it's governed by the Municipal Government Act. You have to use the funds to pay for what they were collected for. So you typically would have a separate fund for each infrastructure type you're collecting for. This is purely capital, not for operations, maintenance, or as we've talked about the asset management plan in the past, that's the maintenance side. Stakeholder consultation obviously is required, and you are required to provide an annual report to the province, basically, just to cover yourself off. And your bylaws have a periodic review requirement. So the M G A allows for basically water, wastewater, storm or transportation. In your case, we're really talking about water and wastewater. And then this isn't on the in the cards yet, but they've expanded things where you can look community recreation, fire hall, police and libraries. Those just tend to be tricky because you need studies to support them. So like, for example, the utility master plan provides the backing for the water and the wastewater and technically storm, although there's none in this levy. So really, what did we do? Looked at the old bylaw. You know, looked at the projects from the utility master plan. Jasper was deemed sort of a global benefit. We didn't get into anything complicated like larger communities might. Looked at how we might develop rates, basically, you know, took those into a stakeholder process and did the reporting, and then the bylaw has been drafted. So in terms of this, like I said, we're getting this stuff from the utility master plan. There was a separate study that would will become to council by December in the future related to the wastewater treatment plant because the, there's some significant costs there or existing and for future growth, basically. So you need to have those reports, obviously, as full backing for your levy by law, so it cannot be challenged. So that's what we have. So at this point, it's water and wastewater, and that's based upon what Joel had touched on as far as benefit. So like the stormwater improvements in town are sort of global benefits, so they're not particularly attributable to growth. They already relate to issues that the model suggested and, you know, existing drainage areas and things like that. Whereas the water wastewater were assessed based on target population that they would serve, certainly. So we're only putting projects that have benefit to growth in. So if like you have a sewer that just doesn't work, that's existing. If you have a sewer that you're upsizing and then new flow will go through that sewer, then it's a cost share, basically. So that's really how that works. And then at this point, there's no grant funding applied. If you get grant funding typically, then that's when you might you know, do you you update your rates, basically, because if you start getting money from the province, for example, you can't charge for things that you don't have to pay, right? And at this point, we are not doing anything involving interest or carrying charges. That's a an accounting decision on the backend. If one wants that, that's sort of not engineering. So in terms of the water levy, so Joel had showed a number of water projects. Basically, for the water system, we're effectively levying the resiliency water main because that's providing fire flow into a grow, the what's expected to be densification area. And then and then that's that's levied a hundred percent. And then there are production well upgrades, and there are also treatment and reservoir upgrades that go in here, basically, and those are shared between existing growth, the existing development and future development. And then wastewater. So there were a number of conveyance upgrades in the utility master plan that are just for existing. Really, all that made it through on wastewater was some some minor sewer and lift station upgrades that would provide some benefit for growth, basically, pardon me. And then as we talk about the wastewater treatment plant where there's you know, an existing, you know, four million dollar type need to upgrade out there. And then, but then to get to the target population, it's more like fifteen million, so the additional cost there gets put on to growth in effect. So when we basically, what we end up doing is we take all those numbers and there's a report certainly that shows that, you know, we add up the total amount of money to levy, basically, and then working with the municipality staff come up with a model to assign that cost. So this square footage question versus unit question, so was arrived at the theoretical new square footage that could be developed for non residential and then a theoretical unit count for residential and then costs were assigned on that basis. I know there was some talk about the square footage versus unit count for, you know, residential and that, and the reason I think the way my recollection, why we went to units versus square footage is at the end of the day, it's really for trying to tie this back to flow generation, right? So like if you build a very small unit and two people live in it, it creates a certain, uses a certain amount of water and creates a certain amount of sewage. If you create a big unit and, you know, it's say it's a large condo or something like that. And there's still only two or three people living in it, it doesn't create that much more sewage, use that much more water. So the attempt here is to try to be as fair as possible as far as expected water usage and sewage generation, because those are defendable. And so that's kind of how we came up with these numbers based on the estimated flow that the amount of commercial space assigned that could be developed would create, and then the amount of flow that the residential would create, and then the number of potential units that those costs could be attributed to. We did a bit of a conversion of some rates nearby, like we have a giant table of half the province. It's not really relevant. We just sort of did a conversion based on sort of a typical development density, just to give you some context of what some other communities and at least somewhat the area appreciating Jasper's situation is completely unique. But just to give you some ballpark of what some rates in other communities that are at least sort of proximal might convert to on a per unit basis, just to give council some guidance on, are we way out in left field? Are we proposing something, you know, substantially different or anything like that? And it's not well out of the realm of I would say normalcy for other communities. So I guess we'll leave that there for questions. I'll hold the share down for now, but I'll pop it up again if we need it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I look to the table for any questions or comments. Officer Milik.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland, and the last table that we had was that offsite levy comparison rate. It's on page thirty three of our agenda package. And it does compare some of our neighbors being Hinton, Edson, Rocky Mountain House. Perhaps a bit of an explanation. The Edson hole high and low seem to be, you know, four thousand dollars apart from a post three unit. Is there, what would be the explanation for that type of variance? Because I do see Rocky Mountain House high and low. Not anywhere near that four thousand dollar difference.
Without going deep into their bylaw, because I'm not dead familiar with it, like reasons for variances can be a number of reasons. Certainly, you have some communities that'll consider benefiting areas, like say you have a community that's sort of segregated a bit, you know, and one area might be cheaper to service versus the other. Another thing that we do sometimes see is, say, a non resident, like in, obviously considering municipal tax base. A non residential rate can sometimes be set lower because behind the scenes, someone's doing the numbers on tax dollars generation, for example, sort of thing. So some communities do use this as a bit of an economic development tool to try and you know, attract certain types of development by artificially setting those lower. So it can be any of those things. A lot of communities, like bluntly, under ten thousand people, it's rare to go to benefiting areas. These ones have chosen to like some of the ones we've been involved with, just for context, like places like Olds or Didsbury or Carstairs, they all use a uniform rate, whereas, for example, the town of High River, who's a bit bigger, they've decided, they decided to go to different rates and it just it has a bit more to do with the uniqueness of the community and how you can best show you know, the cost benefit sort of thing. And it also gets into the question of growth management. You know, if you set one area lower, guess where all the growth is going to head kind of thing. So it becomes a bit of a I guess administrative exercise in some ways, but normally it's that they've made that decision because there's just a cheaper area to develop. That's kind of like the low hanging fruit, if you will.
Thank you. Appreciate you. This is all detailed.
Are there any other questions, comments from council? Mayor Ireland people.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Holland. I'll get started. I'm not sure whether, but all my questions organized yet. But I would begin perhaps with underlying principles. And I think I'm looking at the executive summary page, whatever page that might be. Page fourteen on our electronic agenda, but I'm not sure what page of the report. In any event, there's, there's a reference that the offsite levy update is based on following principles in accordance with the municipal government act. And so I don't know whether there is a clear statement in that act about the principles that underlie offsite levies. But one of them is that the capital cost of infrastructure that benefits growth areas should be paid for by those areas. And I can understand in a large city where a developer builds an entire subdivision and there's all sorts of offsite levies that apply. That capital costs could be targeted to an area. But what does that mean in the Jasper context when, when there's a principle that says growth should be attributed to growth areas and we have a devastated section of the community, but I don't understand how we can connect infrastructure costs to that devastated area. So in context of this report and Jasper, what does that statement mean and what is the the further one? The third bullet that capital cost of infrastructure with municipal wide benefit should be shared between growth areas. Again, what is the area? An existing population. You, you explain how those terms apply in our local context.
Yeah, it's so it, okay, so certainly conventional new conventional offsite levy, you know, you have a new subdivision goes on one side of town or whatever, and you know, they might have to build the developers just to build things to get there. Really, what levies relate to is anything that they'd benefit that's not within that area sort of thing. So in your case, for instance, you know, if you're built in in the fire area, for example, if you're rebuilding like for like, like you you house goes, you replace the house with what was there before, in effect, there's no cost, right? It's only based on net addition of areas. So like, let's say they rebuild and now they add a suite, for example. So that's going to put more people onto the property, which is going to increase the water usage and increase the sewage generation. Okay? So basically, this is, you could argue it's a bit more like a redevelopment levy, which are used in larger centers and common areas if you're doing like, you know, redevelopment inside the community. So this is kind of functions like that. The idea being is if there's additional units put in, so like, say, one, say, one lot had one home. Then they go and rebuild, say, instead they built a duplex and then they sweet that. So now you could have four units, right? So the water usage goes up, the wastewater generation goes up. And so what we're counting for here is really relating mostly to water supply and treatment and a little bit related to wastewater conveyance to get down to those, to the treatment plant in effect. It's only paid on net new units, basically. So that's, that's the key thing to note. There's no cost whatsoever to any residents that are rebuilding. The cost only applies if they build more units on those lots than there was in the first place.
Thank you for that, and I I appreciate that that's where it's going, that the the principle that speaks about areas it becomes confusing to the public, because at the end of the day, an offsite levy is applied against a particular development on a particular lot. And so I just want to be clear that the devastated portion of the community, if somebody simply rebuilds what was there, like for life. The fact that they are in a devastated area is of no consequence. And similarly, if somebody decides to tear down a building that survived the fire and build something new, they would be subject to offsite levies despite the fact that they are not in an area. I'm just the use of the word areas sharing costs is to understand that if there are to be offsite levies, they are specific to a property, not to an area.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead. See, I'm gonna, your worship, appreciating area is is one approach that's used with offset levies, but you know, in looking at the regulation. And again, appreciate we've got subject matter experts online as well. This is maybe a better description that gets away from that challenging word area. And this is from the provincial regulation related offsite levies. It says additional principles and criteria for determining offsite levy costs, and I'll sort of skip down five, one, sorry, five point two. There must be a correlation between the offsite levy and the benefits to new development. So in that, you know, in this regulation, they remove the word area. And they're actually being specific to new development, which is, is, I think, a little bit more clear. You know, it's not talking about area of land or part of a town or quarter section. Which is often how offsite levies in areas that have new greenfield growth are applied. This is a little bit clear that it's about new development. Which implies that new development may occur within an area that existed before, in our case, infill. The thing that I think that this is a bit of a Jasper doesn't frequently develop and deal with offsite levies. And so council may not be aware of this. I think the team, project team made a reference to it. Offsite levies can only be charged once. In communities that have been in existence for a longer time than Jasper, they most likely have charged offsite levies for most of their community over time. You know, Jasper's only existed since two thousand one. You know, I don't believe there would have been any offsite levies under the Alberta Minnesota Government Act charged by parks or any of the local authorities at the time, you know, previously, we probably didn't have that authority. And so other than since two thousand and eight, when the municipality developed its offsite levy by law. All of the existing areas of Jasper have likely not paid offsite levies in the past. So, so we are a very unique circumstance where previously developed portions of the town could still be subject to an offset levy if council chooses to impose it. And to be clear, what's being proposed here would apply townwide. Not just to the areas that were all fire impacted. And I think the the team made a good reference to where we might see a single lower a single family home on a large lot demolished and replaced with a duplex with two legal secondary suites. There's a good example of things that happen in areas outside of the fire impacted areas of town like that. That is currently happening in the in the northeast end of town. And those types of developments have likely not paid offsite levies in the past. And would be subject to the per unit, per net new unit calculation that's being proposed here. So again, Jasper's unique circumstance makes that word area problematic. The geographic area that we're proposing that this should apply to is the entire town site. But because of some of these oddities, we're saying it's actually about the net number of new But because of some of these oddities, we're saying it's actually about the net number of new units that are being added, because those are the things that have a direct impact on the demands on our water, this water infrastructure.
Thank you for that. Continuing on that same page from the report, there is a principle that the capital cost of infrastructure with municipality-wide benefit should be shared between growth areas. I think we mean the individual development and the existing population, which is the community that that's based on, something like that. Recognizing that that might be a proper principle, what is the sharing allocation and how is that configured? So see, Mr. Pollack, and he, he mentioned that, and it is not quite fifty fifty, but how, how is that configured? Is there a formula that can be applied independent of the particular items before us?
Yeah, through you Deputy Mayor Hall, to you Mayor Ireland. The formula itself, again, when you look at an off-site levy, the levy is triggered for anything within the developments that can be attributed to net new growth. So in this report, we look at a total of seven capital projects. The overall cost being roughly thirty-two point six million dollars for these projects. The leavable rates on all seven of these is just a little bit over twenty million, so twenty point six million. So that percentage funded by the levy, in this case, sixty-three percent, modified levy.
And the question I had, how, how do you get to sixty-three percent? But what is the rationale to say this much is attributable to, let's say, the developer and this much to the community?
Yeah, so that, that would be based off essentially the project specific of it. So for example, the seven that are identified here, certain projects actually do have a hundred percent of the capital cost funded by the off-site levy, because a hundred percent of the project identified can be attributed to net new growth, right? Whereas some of the projects here that are proposed, I'll give you an example, one of the, the well systems, only forty percent of that can be attributed to that net new growth. So it would be forty percent of the total cost is, is applicable to the off-site levy. Whereas, yeah, the sixty percent, that would be the general tax base that would be responsible for that. So I hope that answers your question.
Is that a Jasper-specific calculation or is that an industry standard?
Mayor Ireland, I think that's something we'll refer to the project team, but it, you know, the, the high level answer is, is case by case. And there is a methodology to determining in each project, how much should be attributed where? And, and I may well refer that back to the ISL folks, though. How, how do you determine how much of a water well project goes to the general tax base versus the levy or how much of a sanitary project, you know? I think that's the essence of your question, Mayor Ireland, is how, how do you go about determining and allocating that proportion?
Yeah, it gets into, again, how much of it, like it's due degree, it's how much of the population would use it? What's the flow generated for each sort of thing? You know, if it's, are we replacing and improving something that already exists sort of thing? So it does get to be very project-specific. So that's like, we talk about the production wells or we talk about the, the water treatment plant reservoir, right? So those have a benefit to the existing population, but then we consider the growth as well. So it's sort of derived on a per-project basis. And then the way, say, for the wastewater side, particularly the wastewater treatment plant, we worked out what the, more or less, what the heck would be needed to be spent now for the, sort of the shorter term upgrade that would already be required there, having talked through that with, with Courtney's team, basically. And then looking at what the heck would the cost be to get to sort of that maximum horizon and then assigning on that benefit? So what would be already needed, the existing taxpayers pay for, because that's their service effectively? And then how much does it cost to get to the size for growth? That, that difference then gets assigned back to additional population in effect. So it's, it is a per-project calculation, basically.
Wait, there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I have lots of questions. In the recommendations, again, page sixteen of our electronic agenda, there is a suggestion or recommendation that the municipality may choose to set lower rates for, I think they're non-residential, to be competitive with other municipalities. So I just want to have you elaborate on that competitiveness. I take it that that is a suggestion that again, might be relevant in other communities, that if you have lower off-site levies for non-residential development, you may attract developers and, and business to your community. And if that is the case, have you considered the extent to which that might really be relevant in our context?
Yeah, and that's, that's a fairly standard recommendation that at the end of the day, that sort of leaves the factual part of the report and moves into the economic development side, which is typically council's decision to make sort of thing. Certainly you guys are in a more unique situation because you don't really have, it's not like you're a long highway two where if the, your rates are high, the development just goes to the next community down the road or whoever prices at the lowest, certainly that's. And then it usually, the one thing I would say there is, whatever decision one might choose to make as far as the rate or not, the main thing is to be able to show behind the scenes. You've considered sort of if, if it's not collected from the development, for example, where it comes from, the province has, tends to have an opinion on that one. Like I'll give you the example there is that does tend to play a little bit into grant funding. So I can attest that there's three specific communities along Highway Two that have all needed sewage lagoon upgrades for, let's go with twenty years almost now. And one of them adopted proper off-site levy rates, the other two didn't. I'll give you a wild guess which one got a grant for, you know, a municipal water wastewater partnership grant for the province's share of thirteen million, and the two that didn't, put it that way. So the province does pay attention to these things too, so that, you know, effective recovery from development does get considered in terms of whether the province will fund grants as well.
All right. Thank you for that. One of the recommendations also suggests that we may want to consider lower levy rates for non-residential development, recognizing that non-residential development contributes more long-term to the tax base, generally speaking. Because of the nature of the recommendations, that is, per unit levy for residential and square footage recommendation for non-residential, have you considered in all the different types of non-residential development? And for example, if a hotel increases the number of rooms, every room having water facilities, that is entirely different, it seems to me, than a non-residential retail space. And is it equitable that they should be levied at the same rate? Particularly when it could be argued, I think, that additional hotel rooms are one of the things that can drive increased enhancements in our utility infrastructure.
I mean, the main comment I'd have is we did make a fairly, I'd say, conservative assumption on the flow generation from non-residential. So we believe there'd be a fair amount assigned there. The, the quirk basically comes back to though, is at the end of the day, we can only use to assess the rate that which is known, right? So that, that's, that's a bit of a loaded question sort of thing. So we basically had the estimated allowable square footage of non-residential development that the municipality provided to work from sort of thing. So if there's a specific more known plan of what could come, then this could be revisited on that basis, for example.
Let's see, Deputy Mayor Hall, the other thing that I would raise in relation to the mayor's question is, we need to acknowledge a couple of things. Again, Jasper's unique circumstance comes into play here. This opposed off-site levy would only apply to net new square footage in commercial development. And as council knows, there is a, currently, there is a cap on the total amount of commercial square footage that shall ever exist in Jasper, that has recently been allocated. I don't know whether those two properties that receive the additional allocation, I mean, there, there's only two properties that are going to get hit by this, to be, to be very frank. Can we help that this would be have any potential to apply to today? They may have already paid their off-site levies under the old form. I don't, I don't know that for a fact. We could check and see. And so it's very limited applicability in terms of the, the non-residential off-site levy, very, very limited. The, the remaining, yeah, yeah, so one hundred percent of our eighteen, one hundred and eighteen thousand square meters has been allocated. The final, I think it was maybe two thousand square meters was recently allocated across two properties. That's the only thing that would be in scope and it won't even be in scope if they've already paid their off-site levies under the existing bylaw. The other thing that I'd point out is that the recommendations actually specify that the municipality should regularly review its off-site levy bylaw in light of any potential changes. I mean, we should do it as a matter of practice. And should the amount of commercial square footage that's available in Jasper ever change, that would be a time where the municipality should review its off-site levy bylaw to see if it's still relevant, given whatever change might happen. I mean, if in the future, the amount of commercial square footage that is allowed to exist in Jasper is changed by the federal government in the Canadian National Parks Act, then the next thing that should happen is the municipality should review its off-site levy bylaw to see if it still makes sense for that changed circumstance. Because this is not intended to be a, in spite of what we did with our last bylaw, this is not intend to be a pass at once and forget about it for twenty years. This is intended to be reviewed regularly, particularly when there are significant changes to the community. So again, Jasper's special circumstance, that limitation on commercial cap means that while we speak to that in the bylaw, actually has a very, very limited applicability to anybody in Jasper today.
So Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and through you a question for Mr. Pollack, perhaps, Mr. Given. We have an opportunity for residents who may have an opportunity to add an additional dwelling unit in an existing building. And if they do choose to do that and access the funding that's available for that, they would then be subject to the, what I see on page fifteen, the additional levy rate for adding an additional residential unit to, to really an existing home, other than they're making it available to, to have a separate entrance perhaps.
Yeah, through you Deputy Mayor Hall, to you, Councilor Nolan. Yeah, so really, you know, the intent of these off-site levies and then, you know,